I'm glad to welcome you here this evening. Back a number of months ago, the town selectmen and the board came together and decided they wanted to do a study and wanted to look at three components. What sort of prompted the whole process was looking at the AOS and whether Baileyville wanted to continue to be a part of the AOS, whether it made sense to go in a different direction. And in thinking about that, looking back at previous plans that the town had done, it was time to take a look at a comprehensive study. So included in this study, we looked at enrollment studies going forward and what those might look like. And also, a major component of this study was also the buildings and grounds, facilities, what their needs were, where we are, what would be the best approach going forward in the future, and then maybe even how we might get up to that kind of an approach going forward. So Steve Blatt was hired as a main person who brought on Portland Design, who did the enrollment study, and Dr. Eastman, who did the AOS study. And together, Steve has put together a full study and is going to do a presentation and kind of walk you through all that. We have some books here tonight. Steve is going to provide some more so that we can distribute them to every selectman and have some access for the town and every board member tonight. We've got about nine or 10 books available, so we'll just give one on each table if that will work and you can kind of share tonight. And then we'll have some more books printed and he's going to leave me with a thumb drive and a disc so I can continue to print those at need as we go forward. And I think it's going to open up, as we kind of discussed, a lot of discussion going forward about what's the best route to take in the future years. And I think he's got a pretty good idea, laid out some options. There's three or four options as far as the AOS is concerned. There's a pretty good population study, enrollment study, and a real strong study of what the buildings look like, what their needs are, and what the opportunities are for the future. So with that, let Steve finish.
Okay.
Give them together.
Hi, everybody.
And I'll grab these and distribute them to you.
Long, wet drive up here today. I am Steve Blatt. I'm from Portland and I have an architectural firm called Stephen Blatt Architects. And we've been in business for 40 years and we've done about 60 schools in Maine, all different kinds. So in case what I say tonight doesn't make sense to you, it's not because I'm crazy, it's just because I come up with ideas. We did a fairly comprehensive study for you. And as Bill said, it has three major elements. An enrollment study done by Planning Decisions Inc., which is a market study firm in Portland and does them all over the state for everybody. Because when you do a state-funded project, you have to show all of the enrollment documentation. The state won't fund a project if your enrollment's dropping and things like that. And this is not a state-funded project, at least you're not on the list now, but you still need to know what an objective study says is going to happen to your live births and matriculation and move in and move out. So as part of the addenda, it's in the back of that study. Also asked me to do something that I have never done before, which is a study about whether or not Baileyville should withdraw from the AOS. And so another consultant, Dr. Mark Eastman, who is a retired superintendent of schools down in the Norway-Oxford area, and he does consulting all over the place, he did that study. And I'm going to start with that and sort of get it out of the way if it's okay with you. It's, as I say, it has, in my opinion, it has nothing to do with architecture, not architecture. But he did this study and the superintendent, the town manager, asked me to wrap this all into one study.
What page?
So as I say, it's halfway through, you're going to see a gray sheet called Addenda. See it? Next page. Okay. So Dr. Eastman came up and spent time with the central office staff, the admin staff, the town council, the town manager. He spent time talking with everybody about trying to absorb what really goes on here in the operation of the schools. There was a very strong request to consider whether it would be better -- this came from the board, the other board, about whether you should withdraw. And so if the -- Baileyville and the other towns, any of the other towns in the AOS can withdraw, but it has to be supported by a majority of its citizens, and it has to be held 60 days before the beginning of the next fiscal year, since your fiscal year begins on July 1st, you really don't have time to post it this year. So if you were to carry this concept forward and try to do it, you'd be doing it next summer, not this summer. So the cost of that is relatively minimal. That's just the cost of having an election. Dr. Eastman says that's about $1,000. But if you were to break with AOS 90, you would need to negotiate with the AOS relating to joint equipment and shared personnel. And then Dr. Eastman goes on to list a bunch of considerations and options. The municipal officials of the town of Baileyville, who commissioned the study, expressed several concerns relating to the current governance of the schools. The first was sustainability. I'll be able to sort of read this to you. Despite the promise of revenue growth for Baileyville in the future, the community is seeing smaller and more senior population with a smaller tax base. The impending infrastructure projects, which is the sewer, and the need for school facilities improvements has created some financial uncertainties, and rising costs per pupil and the need to provide a quality school program are challenging issues. Supervision and additional concerns that the superintendent has such a wide area of responsibility that he's unable to have enough time to focus on Baileyville. And this has resulted in some facilities and academic issues that have gone unaddressed. A full-time superintendent would have the time to be in the schools with greater frequency. This would allow increased support for building administrators, the development of long-range plans, to make sure that the staff and the student needs are met. Tuition costs. The cost per student currently exceeds the allowable tuition rate in the state, so that the town loses money on each of its tuition students. And despite this loss, the town needs the additional tuition students in order to create a critical mass of student bodies, so you have enough people to have a wide program of academics and to have teams and whatnot. The school board members, in addition to the town officials, voiced these several concerns. Number one, the supervision issue. If the district pursues a major facilities upgrade, the district will need a full-time superintendent to oversee the project. Baileyville board members also feel that the current arrangement does not allow the superintendent enough time to focus on Baileyville issues, such as providing oversight to the principals and the staff. The issue of leadership. Board members felt the superintendent has only enough time to perform a managerial role rather than a leadership role, and they believe he doesn't have the time to initiate change, to improve academic programming, and to do strategic planning. The administrative staff was mixed on the need for a full-time superintendent. The availability of instant consultations through a cellphone has allowed principals to get the advice and support that they frequently need. While the high school principal did not feel there was a pressing need for more time, she felt that the money for a full-time superintendent would be better spent addressing technology needs and other academic issues. The elementary principal and the special ed director felt differently. Their concerns were that leadership is needed to address the changing demographic of the student body, that Baileyville has more low-income, high-need students who require extensive support services. There's also a need for visioning and planning for the town and the school department. So then Dr. Eastman came up with four options and an explanation for each. First option, which is usually the first option, is to keep things like they are. And since no major change can be made until a year from this July, and the superintendent will have only one year left on his AOS contract, making a change at the end of his contract might be less disruptive, so that would be a year down the road. That option basically says, this is me speaking, do nothing for a year. You can't do anything for a year anyway. So it basically says, you can keep thinking about it, but the earliest we can do it is next July. Option two is a complete break from the AOS, which will allow Baileyville the services of a full-time superintendent. This is the costliest approach, at a minimum cost of $163,000 plus negotiated services and standalone costs. The sharing of the office staff might mitigate some of the extra costs. Option three is to reconfigure AOS 90 into two focus areas. And that would provide for a nearly full-time superintendent, say 90%, for Baileyville, who will administer an area equal to the old SU 107 and the AOS business office. And a half-time superintendent would oversee MSAD 30 and the towns to the north. The advantages of this, it could happen next year, it would be more cost-effective for Baileyville, it would cost about $63,000. It would allow business operations to remain in Baileyville. It would result in savings for the AOS of $40,000 in additional salary costs that you wouldn't have to expend, and it would avoid the withdrawal process. So instead of withdrawing, you modify the administrative structure. The negatives of that are that you need to employ one new part-time administrator and that the entire AOS board has to ratify that change. And the fourth plan is a phase-in plan. And this accommodates the current superintendent's contract by phasing in the changes over three years. In the first year, which will be 2017, you do 40% AOS and 60% Baileyville. The next year, you do 20% AOS and 80% Baileyville. In the third year, you do 10% AOS and 90% Baileyville. So that would be the superintendent's obligation. This aligns with the superintendent's contract schedule. It allows the AOS to have a more gradual and manageable transition, but what it may not do is provide for a full-time superintendent soon enough. It would take next year plus three years. Dr. Eastman is happy to review these options with you if requested and wishes you good luck. Good luck. Okay. Now, the other major consultant who provides input on this is Planning Decisions Inc. And they do a booklet, which you will find in here. It is right after what we just read about AOS withdrawal, and it is this. And it's 30 pages, 35 pages. And it's basically computer-generated, after they input a bunch of stuff from state and local government. And this is a summary, and you'll probably find me summarizing a lot tonight, but I want you to understand that there's an awful lot of paper in that report, and it all has some meaning. But the real issue is their charts are broken down into both Baileyville and non-resident, which means the other towns who come into Baileyville. They break it into grades K through six, elementary, grade seven through 12, junior, senior, and then total. And then they do projection years from 215 and 16 now to 225, 26. And this projects, taken from all of the data, how many students there'll be. What they've done here is to say, if this is our projection, and if it's low, it probably won't be low by more than 10%, and it probably won't be higher than more by 10%. What it really says is that if you're going to do a construction project, you should plan for an increase. So you don't do construction, find yourself surprised that you built four too few classrooms. So most of these studies are done in anticipation of a construction project. It's a tool for that. I did this summary for you, and I'll bet you'll understand it. Here's pre-K 6, here's 712, here's pre-K 12. This is the whole town, and this is the column to look at. But what this tells you is that in the last, in the 20 years covered by this projection, the highest we ever were was 423. The lowest we've ever been was 305, and that happens to be what it is currently. In the next 10 years, the projected high would be 321, not much higher than we are now, and the projected low would be 301, not much lower than we are now. These numbers are the factors that Planning Decision suggests that you consider that that might be what you should prepare for, for a high, and that would be what you would prepare for a low. Now, what this says to us is that we have 305 students in our two schools now. We have 167 at the high school and 138 at the pre-K. Of that, Baileyville itself has 125. Of this, you've got more tuition students, the other towns and the upper grades. So 234 school students come from Baileyville out of the 305. The largest they project we could become would be 321, which is not even a classroom difference. Now, in high school, you don't judge your classes by 15 or 16 or 17 kids because you go to different subjects. In elementary school, you do. So what they're saying is that if you take your elementary school, the projected high is virtually the same. They are not projecting that your elementary population is going to grow at all by two kids over the next 10 years. And even if it drops, it drops by 14 kids, which in fact is a classroom. So what you really say is, how heavy are we loading our classrooms? If we're loading them 18 and we have a thin year, we'll load them at 16. That's still terrific. And if you load them at 18 and you had a rush year, you're not going to have one. You're only going to add two students. That's the way it gets translated when you're planning occupancy of a school, how much square footage you need, and in this case, maybe how much square footage you don't need. So it really says that the elementary school isn't getting smaller and it isn't getting larger by anything significant, nor is the high school. Now, it's interesting that in this report from Planning Decisions, they had no way of knowing what the impact of the mill is going to be, what impact that will have on schools. They would not be foolish enough to project that because they can't know it. There hasn't been a record of growth, which they can say, okay, they built one machine and we grew this much, and they built two machines and we grew this much, so we can project that. They just don't know that. So they are saying that if things don't change here, this is what you can expect. 300, not much less, maybe 15 kids more, but that's what we'll be. We won't get up to 423, which is where we were in 2005 and '06, I believe. Yep, we're way back. Okay. So ask me questions. Interrupt me anytime so that I just don't get going too fast. This is all data. We use this when we come up with ideas about what you can do with your facilities. The state of Maine builds schools based on these numbers. Okay? Don't be shy. All right. So Dr. Blatt and I have known each other for 25 years, and I've designed schools in other districts where he's worked. So he invited me to submit credentials, and we did, and others, other companies did too, and you got me. So we have done this facility study. You will find at the very beginning of the book, there's a, I believe it's a nine-page letter. Yep. And I'm going to go through it with you, and then I'm going to start to point out things to you, if that's okay. I don't understand how there is. We've used all this data from the other consultants. We came up in January and we brought up a SWAT team of engineers, civil engineers, which deal with the site, structural engineers who went up into the attic and looked at your foundations, mechanical engineer and electrical engineer, and several people from my office. And we documented the school. Sherman found us a whole bunch of plans, so we drew up accurate plans. I met with your principal and talked to several of the staff to find out what goes where. Had a good meeting with the librarian about this room. And we wrote up summaries of that, and you will find that at the very end of the report, detailed, fairly boring descriptions of what you have here and what isn't good and what is good, and even some pictures. And then we took from that and distilled that to the things that need to be done to this school and the things that need to be done to the elementary school in order to prevent further deterioration, in order to bring them current with codes, in order to provide the kind of spaces that students need now, not 50 years ago when these two facilities were built. There are several issues at each school which really need prompt attention. And the second page of my letter talks about those things at the Woodland Elementary School. Number one, the site is poor. If you had gone, found a site like that today to build a new school, you would not have built on it. It is at the bottom of a drainage swale. It has poor drainage. The fields flood, and the ground all around the building needs to be stabilized by draining it, and you need to do that to the playfields as well. So you need to dig, drain, put in catch basins, either with dry wells but more positively into a storm source system. And the site's so flat, we're not so sure where we could go with gravity run. Those poor ground conditions are not only affecting the fields and the parking lot, but they're affecting the building because the building is sitting on soil that is settling. It's caused moisture problems, and there are several floors on one of the corridors in classrooms that have dropped over half an inch below the walls, so that the wall holds because it's built out of block, and the slab, instead of carrying it, is dropped like this. So there's a gap. That means that everything under the slab is compacting. So you would, we would need to drill holes in the slab and pump under pressure a certain kind of hydraulic fill that would come up to the underside of the slab and then set. And so what you're really trying to do is displace the water that's under there and make it solid. Other than that, you're going to get probably, we don't know this, but you could get more dramatic settling and cracking. And if you decide to do something like this, the other thing we've got to do is pull up all the floor tiles because they have asbestos in them. And asbestos is fine if it's just sitting there, but once you fracture it and it gets pulverized, that's what's bad about asbestos. That's why asbestos insulation's bad for you because it's powdery. Okay. The entire envelope of that school is about as inefficient as you can get. It has block walls with no insulation. It has single glazed windows in steel frames that are both condensing and freezing, and they're rusted because that water just sits on them. So not only were they bad to begin with, they were good quality, but that's all we had 50 years ago. So the exterior doors are rusted to the point where they don't operate as well as they should. They don't close fully, so they're letting cold in and heat out. And so you really need to replace all your doors and windows. The existing attic insulation is blown in. And you probably know this, that your roof used to be flat and they built a pitched roof over it. They did the same thing here. But when you do that, you have a hot attic in the summer and a cold attic in the winter, so you have to vent it. So when you vent it, not only does fresh air go out, but fresh air, wind, snow, and rain comes in, blows the insulation around. So when you go up into your attic, you find some places where there's no insulation, some places where there's mountains of insulation. And so you're getting very uneven insulation and heat loss up through there. When the warm air down here goes up into there and reaches a cold attic, you get condensation, you get moisture, you get rot, and you get mold. Okay. So that needs to be increased, the insulation needs to be increased, better placed, and then held in place. Your building's heating system don't owe you nothing. It is old and it is tenuous. You do not have a backup boiler. You've got to have one in the school. The pumps should be displaced, replaced, and the classroom ventilators, you know, the unit vents in the walls, those are, those should be replaced. You can't find the parts for them anymore. And they should have quieter, more efficient systems. And what we've learned is that in fairly extreme climates like this, when you heat the air, the code also says you have to change the air. What we've been doing for years is exhausting hot air. So we heat it, we breathe it, and then the room exhausts it, if you have an exhaust system. Now, I'll tell you that this room doesn't have any central exhaust system, so you're probably going through the walls. And that means that you're throwing away heat that you've just spent money to blow. Now, we do what's called heat recovery. We take out the hot air and we run it through a big piece of machinery that extracts the heat off it, puts it back into the house. So you exhaust the stale air. Before you put it out the window, you take heat off it, and as the new cold air comes in, you use that heat to reheat it. So it works like this, and you've got to do it. We can't afford not to do that. So in addition to that, the mechanical unit in the gymnasium is basically shot, and all of your controls need to be updated. It's interesting. You can have a good boiler and you can have good insulation. If you don't have a good thermostatic control system, you're getting hot rooms on the south side and cold rooms on the north side, and it just happens. So you do need that. And the last thing is probably less urgent, but I want to tell you that that school is dim. You go into that school, it's not depressing, but it's dim. Your lights are terrible in that school. Not only do you not have ceilings, and when you have a white ceiling down this low, it reflects better, you don't have that. You have a higher ceiling with pipes in it, and you have really awful lighting fixtures. Those need to be replaced, not just more of them. You need to replace those with new LED fixtures. Okay. Page three says, "We think there's $1,350,000 worth of work at the school, most of which you should do if you're going to keep running that school." Now, here's the thing. That school is 27,000 square feet large. I'm going to find that sheet for you, too. That sheet, there's a sheet right at the end of my letter. At the end of my letter, you will see these two boards on eight and a half by 11ths, and then you'll see school facilities' gross square footage. Can you see it? You got it? Okay. You've got 62,000 square feet here and 27,000 square feet there. The state's standard for square footage for an elementary school is 140 square feet per student, and you have almost 200 square feet per student over there. So what that says is, actually, it's pretty good. You have plenty of room. And it's true, you have nice space over there. I don't think the quality of the space is nice, but you've got great classrooms. They're large, they're cold, but they're large. And you've got your own gym, and now you've got a cafeteria space, and you've got music and art. Any elementary schools don't have that. So when you build a new elementary school in Maine, they won't let you build that much. You have to build it smaller. So what that says is, educational practice in Maine says you can do what you do over there in less square foot. So if you keep that school there and you want to make it as good as you can for the kids... and you want to make it as good as you can for the kids, it's going to cost a lot of money. And when you finish putting all that money into it, it isn't going to look very different. Have better lighting. You will see a new furnace. And you will no longer have to deal with the doors and the windows rusting, but it's still going to be the same place. This doesn't envision additions or wholesale renovations. It's just fixing what you've got. Okay? That's it. Now I want to talk to you about this building. This building has some really funky electrical stuff in the attic. I just want you to know that. There's a whole bunch of exposed boxes up there. And those need to be, that is a code and fire hazard. You don't have any sprinklers and you don't have proper alarms. You also have walls in classrooms that aren't sealed against the ceiling, which means if there's a fire event, smoke goes everywhere in this building. And fire doesn't kill, smoke kills. Let me come back. Nobody dies in a school. Nobody. It's been decades since anybody has died in a school fire in Maine. Number one, we're not eight stories like we are in New York City. And get out a window. So you die, people die in fires when they're sleeping. And they don't wake up because of the smoke. But you don't meet code. You can't build a school this size anymore without full sprinkler. So if you do anything to this school, you'll be, we would be required to sprinkle it. So you don't have that and you have that smoke. You have continuous moisture infiltration below us. You all know that. We've got one room out of commission. But our engineers have figured out how to fix that. And by fixing that, at not terribly great cost, you gain another room and you prevent further deterioration and mold infestation. That's absolutely imperative because one of these years, it's going to come up here. So we have to do that. It's probably the biggest have to that you've got to do. Your windows are horrible. They are, they really should be replaced. The same attic insulation is here as is in the elementary school. Same situation. You have a low pressure steam heat system. And that is antiquated. And it's very high efficiency, high maintenance. And it's, when they work, they're very inefficient, very efficient. And someone will tell you that in a ship that uses steam heat, it's incredibly efficient. It's not efficient when you've got a bunch of little rooms all around the school. And it knocks and you have to have return condensate. Nobody does steam anymore. You should replace your steam distribution system. And you can keep your boilers, but you have to put converters on them, which take you from steam to hot water. All of your classroom unit vents are original equipment. So those just have to be replaced. And finally, and this, this is, I think it's pretty serious. You've got one of the nicest gyms in the state of Maine. You've got the worst kitchen I've ever seen. And, and you, you use your gym to eat in, which means you can't use it to play in. And all of, in my opinion, all of the space outside the court and bleachers is poorly designed and poorly used. You have a huge amount of space on the second floor to get to. It's not handicap accessible. You have really strange locker rooms that you can't oversee. There's no reason to have the nurse out in the gym. The nurse should be in the middle of the students, et cetera, et cetera. So in my narrative, what I say to you is, that building should be used for athletics or performances. And that's it. You shouldn't do other things in there. So my proposal to you is going to include options to that. I want you to know that out of sixty-two thousand square feet here, twenty-seven thousand square feet, forty-three percent of your school is in the dome. So the sixty, the fifty-seven percent is in the school, which yields a pretty good square foot per student. And I know these are numbers. It's not humanity. It's numbers, it's data. But you've got just about two hundred, two hundred and eleven square feet per student here. That's pretty good. One of the things that happens, I think I said it on the elementary school, when you've got a small student body, you still need the same basketball court. You still need the same kitchen if you've got a hundred or two hundred or three hundred kids. So a small school has to be more square feet per student. Whereas you could have six hundred kids. Six hundred kids, you might have two gyms. But with six hundred kids, you'd have the same basketball court. And you divided it over twice as many kids. So your, your proportion comes down and it looks better. So you're not bad in the high school, but you are running a twenty-seven thousand square foot athletic facility. Now, you probably did the right thing because you do multi-purposes out there. You do everything. But you only do two things good, and that is sports and performances. Your new ceiling in there is the only thing that makes your performances even feasible. Before you had that ceiling, I think you couldn't hear anything. So now you've got a very large presentation space and a terrific gym. Okay. If you wanted to fix all the things in this school, on page five, you would spend about four million dollars. And that would include everything I mentioned that isn't good plus doing some, you know, that would be part of your bidding. Fixing up, we could keep the kitchen where it is and fix up the kitchen fire hood. It wouldn't be solving your real problems. But then it would be about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of miscellaneous general renovations all over, plus all the other things I mentioned. So that's a four million dollar bill. That's a lot of money. But you also have a big facility that is the center of town and it's the source of a whole bunch of civic pride. And you can't let this school go or you will have even less than you have now. So I, I'm not so sure you'd have to spend four million, but you can't do it for five hundred thousand dollars. You wouldn't even see it. In fact, just the sprinklers is two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. The mechanical system upgrade is a million and a half dollars. These are things that our engineers, who have the plans and they've looked at it with us, and they do this in other schools. We do these studies for other schools. So you've got a four million dollar project that you've got to do while kids are in school. Okay. So now I'm going to start to read from my letter to you. But I, because I wrote it, I can edit it as I stand here. Okay. I told you about the enrollment and that you don't have much fluctuation that you have to worry about. Unless something really unforeseen happens, you won't get another drop like you did get and lose a hundred students. And things would have to get really good really quick for you to have a flood of students because of a mill expansion. And that's going to happen gradually, I think. I don't know that. I'm just proposing that. I told you that the elementary school at twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and seventy feet has a hundred and ninety-eight square feet per student. So you are larger than you need to be. And that's all about that. The high school, because of the dome, has three hundred and seventy-two square feet per student. Exactly twice what the state allows in a new high school, which is one eighty-five square feet per student. So there you sit. And I've already made my comments about what the gym does well and what it doesn't. Okay. Summary. "The elementary school has more than sufficient space for program, but the quality and the condition for both the site and the facility require that you give that serious concern. You can't not. There is clear need for significant site work and because it's fifty years old and when it was built, it was not the quality of this building. Maintenance and repair costs are going to escalate every year." You know, it's really hard to all of a sudden have Dr. Braun hit with the fact that the boilers are absolutely kaput. And we don't have time to think about it. We've got to put one in next week. So even in this school, this high school, you have a hundred and sixty-seven students over six grades. That's small. You've got a hundred and thirty-five students, thirty-six, eight students over eight grades. So it's, it's tough. That makes it tough. Okay. So this building here, even though it's of the same vintage, is in better shape. Its site is small and it's constrained by residential development. There are no constraints at the elementary school site, but none of the land is good buildable land. So even though you need to spend four million dollars on this school, as I said, it is really the center of town. And when you Google this town, you see the white dome. That's what you see on Google Earth. So we feel that your site design, the parking vehicular circulation is pretty good. You don't seem to have too many problems. You've got your athletic field over there, which deserves improvement. If it deserves a little bit of expansion, if you could have good discussions with property owners. But if you were to do that kind of construction, this facility would feel pretty new. This would be either, you'd consider it renewed. This would be a nicer building. The windows would be nicer. Your lights would be nicer. Your heating would be more leveled. You would have a sprinkling system. It doesn't make it nicer, but it means all the ceilings are taken down and either replaced or put back in place. So the real question becomes, should we spend four million dollars here? Should we spend another one point three five million dollars over there and have two buildings to operate? Or should we consider other options? For instance, would it be better to have one, three hundred student school? And make this a pre-K twelve? Could it work? Would it be good for the community? Would it be good for the students? Would it be good for the staff? Would it work on this site? How would we do it? So we've come up with a bunch of options and I've got boards to show you. So I'm going to ask you if you will consider watching me and asking me questions rather than reading what you've got in front of you. I shouldn't have given you two of those.
Yeah, I guess not.
Okay. There are two proposals. One is called B proposal. And B has two options. And one is called C proposal. The B proposal, B one and B two says, B one says, go up on Summit Street and buy this property and one of the other two properties so that one or the other, but not both, could be a playground. And add elementary school classrooms and support space. Right here, one story, right on slab on grade. So that when the students come in, they come in the front door and the younger kids immediately go right and they don't go through the high school. So if they come on a different schedule, they come in and go. And they go right by the office and the principal and guidance. And when they have specials like art and music, they're right here. And they would go down here for lunch. And they could come down to the library. But they're all in the core right here. And either this or this is their playground completely fenced in. A better scheme is to also build a cafeteria and a kitchen here. So that when you come to the school, first thing you see are all these windows in the cafeteria. And instead of being sort of a blank wall, which isn't terribly inviting, come up to a cafeteria. And the service vehicles will come in here and go into the kitchen here. And what we've done is taken that wing and basically just moved it out a bit. So you still get your support spaces and your eight classrooms. And you've done this without interrupting this. So what we would suggest you would do here, believe it or not, is if you do this scheme, build this completely and then break through the wall. And while you're renovating this, before you bring kids over from the elementary school, shuffle kids in here for a month or two while you fix this wing. And then shuffle kids in here while you fix. So that you can get your renovations done quicker. Now, this is a floor plan with this scheme where you keep cooking and eating here. This is a floor plan with this scheme. Where you're cooking in here. We've also proposed that you make some changes to the floor plan. And it basically doesn't involve anything but shifting uses. But because we met with staff and students, we're going to propose things like move this English arts room elsewhere and put another art studio here, right near this one. So that these students don't need to go over here for digital art. They'll just go right here. And take this classroom and break it into JMG and a conference room. So that we have a very nice conference room near the office. Move the nurse here, near the office, near guidance, so we can plug into plumbing in the boys' room. Take over this entire science room. Relocate it and make this into a special ed resource and life skills complex. You need more and better space for special needs. Take this room right across the hall here. Create a little lobby and make that the computer lab. Take the computers out of this so that this big room can be book collection for pre-K through twelve. Let them all know what it is to use a library. Put the computers over there so that this librarian can oversee both. So those are just tweaks. Those are just pushing things around a bit. When we fix up the basement, we would break that space into not only two classrooms with windows, but also a small resource room and a small group room. We also think that the resource room up in this corner of the basement really should become a girls' room so that these students don't have to go upstairs and downstairs to go tinkle. They can just stay right on their own floors. So a bunch of little things like that make a school easier to use. And so what you see in the red here, if you look at these, the blue is what's there. The red is proposed. Same here. There's not much difference at all. What you see is the difference here. The kitchen has gone and this really becomes an auditorium gymnasium. And that's about it. What you will pick up in those strange perimeter spaces is all the storage you would ever need. So you don't have to put a bunch of storage in here. That's easy enough to get to. So with a little bit of renovation, you could dedicate those things. Your locker rooms are so underused that they create a hazard because you can get in trouble out there. It'd be better off to make them storage and lock them. Find out if anyone's going to use them. Cut them down. Showers aren't used. Think about that in a realistic way. We, we do a lot of middle schools and a few high schools. And although high schools still need locker rooms, they're getting smaller and smaller. And the number of showers is smaller. And all the showers are private. No such thing as a gang shower. We need to start dealing, I don't know if you want to hear this, but we're dealing with transgender bathrooms in every school we do now. And so we will take that into account. A transgender bathroom is nothing more than a one-holer. That's all it is. It's a room with a locked door and a john and a sink. That's all it is. It's not rocket science, but you've got to have it. Okay. So that's B. B one and B two. This is, I think, what I would call a fairly conservative proposal. It doesn't make a lot of waves. It doesn't change grade configurations. It basically does a lot of tweaking and polishing. And then it takes what I think is a really... And then it takes what I think is a really important... I think this room would actually make this even more of a community center than it is now because tonight's meeting would be in that room with coffee on the counter. And because this would really all be glass, and this is the traffic circle, it would be a welcoming point. And then we would want you to put more windows across here anyway so that the office... The woman in the office who works so hard, the windows are up here. She can't see anybody coming in. And that's a easy thing to fix. Anyway, so those are tweaks. This is major, big time. What I really like so much is that kids have this. Younger kids can actually do phys ed in the cafeteria without breaking down the whole cafeteria because pre-K and K basically do gross motor movement. And then they would go right out here to a playground. And if this were the playground instead, we would just flip these rooms and go out here. And that's nice. A pre-K classroom would have its own door and a little fenced-in area so that pre-K can come and go all day long, no matter where the teacher is. You just open the door and you can't get outside the fence. Okay. Now, I'm gonna show you something that's a little more radical. Questions?
Yeah, just on the cafeteria there, how do you shuffle three hundred kids through? What kind of a...
Three lunches of a hundred.
Okay.
Easy, easy. We designed that cafeteria for a hundred kids. Yes?
Just curious. Cafeteria sticks out in that model.
Yes.
Why not, why not extend the entire length of that now the other way? The principal's office, the nurse's office.
Oh, oh.
Extend them out, give more room.
Give more room to what?
The office and nurse, the...
Here?
Yes.
Bring this all out?
Yeah.
Could do that, could do that. Your office isn't terribly small. Your office is okay. It just needs to be reconfigured. The, what's interesting is you have that conference room right next door to it that's down the ramp. That's useless. You'd have to figure out how to make that work better. So that would be a bunch of tweaking. And you know what? You might come up with that and say, you know, it really would be worth it. We've got all the, all the forecourt we need. We could at least come out halfway and make these better. You can do that. So I like your attitude.
Are you going to hire staff room?
That's a good question. I wasn't thinking of it. You have a nice staff room. Hmm, that's a great staff room here. Not big enough?
I don't know, ours is a hole in walls.
Over at the elementary school? Oh, yeah. Well, you guys... They didn't have teachers then. They just sort of had watchers. Okay. Here's, here's scheme C. This is a little more daring. And I bet we'll have a lot more questions because it presupposes some more reconfiguration. Okay. This says, forget this area up here. Buy this property on the corner of Palm and Main. Come right off the current junior high school and the library. It would be right there. Not directly there, but there. You'd still have windows. And this would be a two-story addition right here. And this two-story addition, I'll go quickly ahead, would have the entire elementary school on the lower level with a door to its playground and its own bus drop-off and its own parent drop-off right there. This one would not build anything new. But if you went for the good, good scheme, you'd build the same thing here and you'd still build the cafeteria kitchen up there. Because the cafeteria kitchen is gonna give the whole school a shot in the arm. It's gonna, it's gonna let you cook more food, which you need to do, and serve it faster, which you'll need to do with everybody in-house. And it's gonna give you much better truck access and waste out. And it doesn't impact the site. I mean, it's a really easy thing to build. It costs money, but it's there. Now, let me show you this because this is gonna raise an eyebrow, I bet ya. One of the things that I just mentioned casually because you asked me is lunches. I said, do three lunches of a hundred. But the fact of the matter is you've got a hundred and almost a hundred and forty elementary kids and a hundred and seventy high school kids. So that doesn't break easily into hundreds. So I wanna propose something to you. Would you consider enlarging the size of your junior high school so that it became a middle school? And would you consider that it became a five, six, seven, eight middle school? And I know that parents get very concerned about their gorgeous little five, uh, fifth-grade daughters and the eighth-grade guys. And the fact of the matter is what happens in a middle school elsewhere when you have a six, seven, eight, which is the most common middle school, the sixes are still alone and the seven eights are the big guys. When you do a five, six, seven, eight, the fives and sixes are a cohort team and they get taught the same way. And the seven, six, sevens, and eights are their team. What it does is it lets us say that this lower floor, right here, is pre-K, K, one, two, three, four. These are the two junior high school classrooms. And we take the entire other room, which is currently half health and half mold, and we make that into the elementary school, a multipurpose room, village green. And that is where you have lunch and support groups and everything. We're designing for the elementary school, resource rooms, small group rooms, toilets in each room. But this would become the opportunity to design not as large as your gym, but a, a good common space where you could do lunch. And I think you should cart lunch down the elevator to these kids and let them eat right here. What we do then on the upper floor is create a five, six, seven, eight middle school. And they're upstairs with the older kids, but they're at the end of the hall. It's their own neighborhood, right out here. They have their own bathrooms. They have good access to the library. They can go to this for gym and lunch, or they can go to this for gym and lunch. And that's why I suggest that wherever the kitchen is, you cart the food to the youngest kids so that they don't have to go really far anywhere in the school. They only have to go upstairs to the library. They're right down there. So this proposal, it has more far-reaching issues because it proposes a curriculum change, a revision. Yes?
Are you forgetting about our music and the...
No, I'm not. But the thing about the younger students is that they get accompanied to those. Whereas the older students have free range through the corridors. So that if you go to these activities, you would travel. Now, you could teach those things here. Unlike the addition over here where you're close to these things, you would be much further away. One of the things, an option that I mentioned in my narrative was, let's say there's a lot of resistance to five, six, seven, eight. And that you would really have, rather have maybe pre-K through five and six, seven, eight. Well, then, maybe this spare room up here would become an art and music room for elementary school students. This is just an early concept. We're just starting to say, does this idea make sense? Does the idea of adding on two stories here make sense? I think this does make sense, no matter what we do. But everything that we do like that costs money. What I like about this is that everybody gets something. The middle school comes out of those two rooms in the basement and gets sort of equal time. The elementary school owns the entire lower level. All of these rooms have good windows. They do. We would improve the windows in the junior high rooms. And all of the tweaks occur in here. And so that's, that's scheme. So the C scheme adds on this corner and the B scheme adds up here. The, um... The costs of these are in your sheet. It is the last page before the folded sheets start. And it shows you the things we just talked about. Now, all of these construction proposals assume or presume that you would no longer use the elementary school. So, for instance, you could back completely off and say, all we're gonna do is this. We're gonna spend four million dollars improving the high school plus six to seven hundred thousand dollars to build this. And that's it. That's all we're gonna do. You'd have a better school. But you're still gonna run the elementary school. You're still gonna operate it and take care of it. So then the question becomes, so which is a better place to put our kids? Should we put our kids... Here or here? This doesn't impact the middle school at all. It does take up basement space that's currently moldy and gives it to the middle school. This completely moves the middle school. Both of them have new kitchen cafeteria. This one has the elementary school here. This one has the elementary school down here. And they cost differently, but not a lot. Once you spend the four million dollars to fix the high school, which you really need to consider seriously, then the prices range from six point six million to seven point seven five million. And so it wouldn't be the cost difference that would probably make you go in one direction or the other. It would be, what would be a better environment for the kids? Yes?
Have you considered having pre-K five or pre-K four happen in that area? Five through eight down in the other area?
Down here?
Yeah.
It would be hard. I would not want to take your existing lower floor right here and put five, six, seven, eight. That wouldn't be really very good space. I mean, you've already got close to fifty kids down here. And it isn't what you'd call airy. So what I'm trying to do also is to build in one place or the other, not both. Now, this one does build in both, but this is almost a separate item. It's part of this one. But if you do this, you could just keep doing this. But this would be such a plus to the school. It's also three-quarters of a million dollars, so it's not free. But it's a huge boost to the school. So, so everybody gets the plus of this. The middle school does really well here. But I think you have a good point. Figure out maybe this wants to be pre-K five. And we wanted to do six, seven, eight here. So we put the sixth grade in the current health room with some much nicer windows. By the way, when you go downstairs in this building into the health room, the problem with that room is it's too long. The wall doesn't belong that far back. You gotta go closer to the windows, build a wall, paint the room white, and put in better lights and windows. That won't be a bad room. It is just really awful now. So you gotta change that. And if you did that, and say you did, it's a very good suggestion. If say you stayed down here and you did seven, uh, six, seven, eight plus an extra room for resource or gathering or tutoring or whatever. So those are my proposals. They, they, you'll find that in B two, it has a new kitchen cafeteria. It is here. In, in C two, it has the same thing, the kitchen cafeteria. But instead of building here, we build here. The cost goes up because here, you're not building anything for the middle school. And here, you're building on a whole new floor. So this becomes major construction. This is a little more conservative. Moving six down here would be an interesting idea. We'd have to think about whether or not the constituents, the staff, the students, the parents felt comfortable doing that. It isn't gonna make much of a difference up here in terms of construction. But what it is gonna do is it's gonna put a hundred and forty kids here. So you're probably gonna have to say, hey, um, four, five, six, you'll go to lunch with seven and eight at the same time. That might be tough. If you, if you all live together, you learn how to get along. But when you meet just at lunch, sometimes it's a little different. But I urge you to consider really that you now have lunches out here. And it may be disorganized, but at least it's not chaotic because you're in the Colosseum. Go into a nice-sized room. I mean, we're looking, if you look at the size of this library we're in right now, and it's just about the size of the cafeteria, but it's gonna have a ceiling that's three feet taller. Makes all the difference in the world. So imagine a hundred kids in this room for lunch. It'll work fine. Just work fine. We may come to the conclusion that part of that cafeteria should have a couple of booths or something so that it's used off hours. Over in Winslow, down in Winslow in the high school, we did that. We had cafeteria and we had another area of it that we called the café. And we put booths and little tables. Kids are in it all day long, the high school kids. They're just there. That's where they hang. And it's right across the hall from the office and nobody gets in trouble and it works. So, so sometimes if you give those kinds of spaces to especially middle school and high school students, they spend more time, quote, "out in the open." And they have more respect for the building because they wanna use it. They don't want someone to say, no, you can't use the café anymore because you abused your privilege. Okay. So that's what I did. It's important to understand that if you should close the elementary school, you save money every year because you don't run it. You don't heat it, you don't clean it, you don't fix it. And your fixings at the elementary school are gonna get more expensive. So you don't secure it, you don't paint it, you don't do any of those things. You've got your playfield across the street, the, the sports field. And it would be wise, because I know this is a very, very sports-minded community, to spend some money draining that field better, the one across the street. Early on, when I was up here with my civil engineers, we all talked about how across the street here could be reconfigured to give you more fields without, without an awful lot of additional acreage. When we build playgrounds that are as compact as, say, this one, then we invest money in really good creative play equipment so that kids, instead of just running, are climbing and sliding and all of those things. And this, this actually is larger than one of these. And I am going to make a proposal if we go forward that we don't store the buses here, that we store them elsewhere so that this is no longer a vehicular area. Even if it's, I mean, it could be extended play, but it also could just become more lawn. In this scheme, we're using up... I think one of the nicest things about this scheme is this, actually. I think that's just great. So you're not loading three hundred kids here. You're loading a hundred of them right here and they go right in so they don't walk very far to the first floor for classrooms and their playgrounds right outside.
Are there two playgrounds here?
This one?
Pre-K, K, and then...
We would, we would make a small pre-K surrounded by the K, but the pre-K is fenced. And then the big, the big one is fenced again, but way out so that you have a small area. And we've been noticing that pre-K sometimes take a different recess. They just go by a different schedule. Okay. So that's what I've been doing. It's, you're gonna save probably more than you think you are if you close down a facility. Probably a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars, especially because you are pumping heat out of that old building. When you do this building, it becomes much more efficient. All the new construction is built to the highest energy standards. We would be re-insulating this roof, which would help you a lot. All your windows would be new. So you're gonna add square footage here, perhaps as much as fourteen, fifteen thousand square feet. Probably not gonna increase your energy cost. You'd get more efficient boilers, more efficient distribution, better envelope. So that would be interesting. That means that you have a net savings of your entire fuel and electrical bill at the other place. Probably... Probably, you'd absolutely reduce custodial time, because custodial time fixing a fifty, taking care of a fifty-year-old building every night is a lot different from taking care of a building with new materials. I think you're psyched. When I was up here with my civil engineer, the site planner, he said, boy, this is a tight site. Boy, this is a tight site. Boy, this is a tight site. But you know what? It's what you have. And it's not as if this is a railroad track. So when we say we need to buy properties, we check in with your, your town clerk, and she has assessments on properties. And yes, we don't wanna take someone's home, but there are lots of homes you could live in around here. And I think the fact that this is already a school in a neighborhood, it's not like you're coming into a place and plunking a brand-new school when there never was one. You, you, you are the neighborhood, so an extension here doesn't seem to me that it would upset the apple cart too much. So we've got costs that range between four to just fix to seven point seven five, almost eight. So that's a pretty big range. The way these projects are funded is through a long-term bond, and it costs money. It's expensive. But I can only, and, and, I mean, we're working on a project over in Milo. They are a smaller, they're, they're a bigger school than you are 'cause you have more towns, but they're a pretty small school, and they're looking at the same kind of project. And everybody says, how are we ever gonna afford that? Which you have to turn around, it's, it's just if you say, how am I gonna afford a new car? I mean, your car doesn't start, and you don't have a choice. So my role is to tell you, we've looked at what you've got. We think this is what you need to keep what you've got in good shape and to not become a real drag, a burden. And then these are some things that you can be more creative. If you do this, you're sort of set for the next twenty-five to fifty years. You don't have to worry about it. Should you be fortunate enough to have to handle another hundred students, think of this. Let's say that the mill just goes bananas, and you find that kindergarten, there's four kindergarten classes coming in one fall. Just remember that even if you do all this, if you needed to, you could take this all over from middle school, high school, and build yourself a good new elementary school. Because if you had another two hundred, two hundred and fifty students, you probably could afford that. I just want you to think of that. So this is not sealing yourself in something you can't make use of. All of these spaces could easily turn into high school expansion space.
The expansion cost does not take into consideration the renovations for the high school?
Yes, it does.
It does?
Yes.
Oh, I see it now.
And the other thing I want you to know is that you have, each scheme has a total construction cost, and then under it in bold is a total project cost. The difference is, you always carry a contingency fund of a lot of money, like ten percent. You have to pay me, my engineers, you have to buy some furnishings for net new space, although I would be hoping that in, in the effort to, to economize, we would do an inventory at the elementary school and take everything that has years left in it, but not the stuff that ends up in the portable junk trailer over there. That, that has to leave. That trailer has to leave. You've gotta, we've gotta learn to get rid of stuff.
Yeah.
You really do. It's hard, but it's not, it's, it's, when we, when we do these schools and we have, you know, sort of a yard sale, and you spend the whole day, and everybody hurts their back, and you make two hundred dollars 'cause you sell a desk for five, five dollars, and it's better than that. It's a better desk than that. So anyway, that's aside. Yeah, hi. Do you have your hand up?
Yes, I do.
Oh, you're yawning.
No. I got a number of questions.
Sure.
Renovating the high school, this school, how do you do that while you got students in the school? Is that feasible?
Yeah. It's, it's difficult. It takes a very good builder who has experience working in occupied buildings. It takes longer to do it. We have found in the past, we, we did this at the school in the town I live, in Cumberland. We did it at Greeley High School, and it took us two years to do. We built the whole new wing first, and we shuttle kids into it. So we evacuate one wing, tent it off, and do all the work. The contractor agreed to work a whole bunch of three to eleven shifts. That helped a lot. Contractor worked every Saturday. That helped a lot. And, and you, it, it, it's, it's not easy. It's sometimes harder on the staff than the students, but it actually ends up being fascinating. We have found that most of the schools we do these projects in, students take a real role in the project, and they really wanna see it. So it takes longer. Phasing is important. If you're renovating a school project where there's no new space, it's tougher 'cause we try not to bring portables onto the site. But I think if we were to build either this elementary wing up here, this one, we'd build it first, and for the first six months, we'd shuttle kids in and out. And it's not easy. But for instance, this room, once we got the sprinklers in here and the new lights, we just rearrange the furniture. You do a lot of work in the summer. We might ask you one year, especially if you didn't have a lot of snow days, could you let yourselves out ten days earlier, and could you start a week later in the fall? So the contractor comes in here and works crazy in the summer.
I'm, I'm seeing dollar signs going past my eyes. Second question. Do we abandon or find a new use for the elementary school?
That is not architecture. That's up to you. I know that it's a good recreation venue. I don't know how lucky you'd be selling that building. And I urge you to consider, with regard to your school budget, that you don't just use it as another school facility 'cause you'll end up spending the same money as if it were a school. Now, you could take all of those incredibly leaky windows, and you could panel them over with insulation and use those rooms just for other uses. But, but if you, if you open the doors, you're gonna spend money. For instance, what happens if we could turn the heat way down to forty-five degrees in the perimeter rooms where your heat loss is, and just keep your cafeteria, gym, one office, and a couple of bathrooms, so you could use it for rec uses? You could rent it. You're gonna have to, you're gonna have to have someone who's willing to spend energy doing that. But you got parking, and you got playfields, and, for instance, you, I guess you could use it for athletic equipment storage for playing across the street. But I, I haven't thought that through. You would have to charge me with that, saying, come up with some creative uses for the elementary school.
That leaves Baileyville still a very small school.
Yes.
Are there alternatives? Is a affiliation with other schools in the area, such as Callis, more feasible? Build a school that will accommodate enough students for Callis, Baileyville, Princeton. Make it a larger school, goes into Class B level school, but it puts enough students in the school to enable expenditure of money to provide the other classes, art, music, theater, AP, that is very difficult to provide in a small school like this?
I think, first of all, we actually looked at that over in Milo. Milo is part of an RSU or an AOS where they've got forty-one and thirty-one. Thirty-one is Holland. Forty-one is Milo. They share a superintendent and a central office, and that's all they share. We invited them to consider, when we did the, the study for Milo, would you consider coming with us? Because then we could put a twelve-hundred student body together and go to the state and say, build us a mega-school in no man's land between the two towns. They wouldn't go. They said, we're happy with what we've got. So you'd have to, you'd have to say to Callis, would you be interested? And you gotta think carefully. Doesn't cost anything to ask the question. But what are Callis's facilities like? Are they nice?
That's fairly new compared to ours.
Okay. So then you'd have to look at that and say, would they do that? Would they be interested? Now, if you put an application in, you got on the list, you'd be waiting ten years before you get your project. You can't do nothing for ten years here. However, if you got a state project, you pay nothing for it. Zero. And you'd get a seventy-million-dollar facility for nothing. Not nothing. Gotta go find some land that was acceptable to the two. You gotta convince people that you want your kid, who now goes to a hundred and thirty students, a hundred and forty student school, that you're gonna go to a twelve-hundred student school, is gonna be in at least five hundred elementary school students in that school. That's a big change. It's one of the things up over in Milo and Holland, they said, uh, we're not so sure we're ready for that. On the other hand, over in Brooks, they just did that. They just closed five schools and created a twelve-hundred-student, pre-K twelve, state-funded, big school. I've heard it's a good school. I haven't been there yet. So that's a completely different road. That says, we're gonna get on the bandwagon, we're gonna make an application to the state, and before we do any of that, we have to get this dream concept concretized somehow. You'd have to have commitments that you'd stay with it. You don't wanna get two years into the process and have Caribou call you up one day and say, we've decided not to go.
Callis.
What?
Callis.
What did I say?
Caribou.
You know what I meant.
You say it's a ten...
Well, yeah, we can bring Caribou in.
You say it's ten, you, that...
Oh, God, it's awful.
I mean, so you, you're...
I applied for a building project in Sed forty-eight, RSU nineteen, now, seven years ago. It just went to the road. And actually, Steve was a part of the pre-planning for that. WTRC was a part of the planning, and they hired a different architect completely. Wouldn't have been it, they probably hired them, but, but they've been seven years. And that building, the elementary school replacement, was second on the list of six. The high school replacement was fifth on the list of six. Seven years later, they made it down to the six so they could do a combined project.
Right. It's very, very hard to do.
So I'm saying, is, ten years, this place can't survive, I mean, can't keep dumping money into this place.
Well, the other thing is, is that, is that you're, you're also, you're also, there, there's no category of rural schools or small schools. There's just schools in the state domain. So Sanford just got a ninety-six-million-dollar high school. Sanford. High school. Just high school. So that's ten, that's ten, ten-million-dollar projects that could've gone all over the state. And that's what happens.
And for, for Sed forty, RSU nineteen, they'll be seven years to get to this point, but they'll be another three years before they open that. So they're gonna be ten years in total. And my understanding is that in the next year, we may see the application process open. But in that first, first application project, there were about seventy-two, if I remember right.
Is that all? Lot of people have given up on it. They're going local-only, like...
There only six were approved.
They're just unlucky.
Look how much hassle is, how long you have to wait for an eighty-thousand-dollar bus? They gotta go up there fourteen, sixteen years.
Sixteen years. That was the newest one.
I do have a question about the parking. I know you said it was sufficient parking, but I'm wondering, 'cause I know, like, our staff lot right now isn't enough for our staff here. Lot of your staff is still parking in the student parking. So if you bring over the elementary school...
Yes.
And then, you know, are, are you gonna take out some of the islands, maybe, and add a few more parking spaces?
We, we don't think that, we think your parking is reasonable, but it could be more efficient.
Yeah, 'cause I'm also thinking, I know that there's parents that are in and out, and, you know, where are they gonna park? If we've got our staff, the staff from the elementary school, and, and then we have students as well, 'cause I know sometimes myself, if I go home for lunch, I'm hard-pressed to find a parking space when I get back.
No, but where the buses are parked, or where you have bus parking, they would be, they wouldn't be there if you, if the buses...
We would probably say to elementary school teachers, some, if not all of you, would park here and go right inside, which would be much nicer. Now, we've also, the elementary school has an elementary school office right inside the entry, so that that's where the elementary school is administered, although you have the, the rest of the school for support. So we would try to look at some parking here.
We used to park across the street, some of us.
Here?
Right over here, like...
There?
Yeah.
And this is, this could be reconfigured. The first thing that the engineer said to me when we here is, is, why aren't they parking here? On this side, why isn't this what they call double-loaded? You pick up all of that space, 'cause you, you can't build right up to your property line, but you can park up to your property line, especially if you build a nice fence down there. There's a whole bunch of ways to do that. I'm sure we would improve the circulation.
Okay, 'cause I'm just thinking of the added parents, I might be coming in.
Oh, yeah. You'll have events.
If, if this ever come to be, as, as an ex-plough man here, never, never, never put granite curbs in.
Okay.
And, and keep the parking lot as flat and open as you possibly can, so it acts as clean...
All these little fancy islands.
No trees. No trees, no islands.
Right.
I'm telling you, uh...
That's right.
The architects get too fancy at times. I'm sorry.
Okay, so, um, this is, this gives you everything that, that I talked about tonight, a little bit more detail. I think that this report, I would hope that you would see that it deserves some study. And what I would really like to do is have you have a chance to talk and look, and I can send up more copies if you wanna distribute them. And then I would like to come back and have a discussion with you about...
Where do you want to go?
When I was with the town manager and the superintendent this afternoon, we ended our meeting, and they said, what should we do? And they wanted me to recommend something. And I think, I think before I make a recommend, I mean, I would like you to do, I, I like this scheme, but this involves a lot of planning and a lot of curriculum adjustment, and, and it's the most expensive, but not by a terrible amount. Now, when I say that, don't think just 'cause I'm from Portland that I think it's not expensive. It's very expensive. It's very expensive, but it's, it's the heart of your town. And I think it's, every time we've done a project where in a small town, we consolidated everything into a core, it works. It just, it always works. The lights are on. And I would be concerned about the little kids and the big kids. What we have found more frequently, especially, especially in small communities, is that the older kids mentor the little kids. And it's the middle school kids you worry about, to make sure that they have a place. That's one of the reasons I really want you to consider giving the middle school some turf that they own, that isn't in the basement. I mean, I, I'm being critical, and I'm not trying to be sarcastic, but because there's just two classrooms down there, that's not a critical mess. They are not, you know, they're out there. If we were to put four classrooms together and move them upstairs, they've got, they've got the newest space. And I think that this lower level, if it had more rooms and more activities, could be a nice space. Yes?
I just have a question. How, how much time would we talk into the elementary school to be, well, we already spent a ton of money on it, but until it gets to be ridiculous? I mean, I think it is now, but it's...
I would suggest that you spend money very, very carefully and, and Band-Aid it some more if you think you have popular support to go forward with a consolidation. If, if you have a couple of public meetings and see what people say and hope they'll stand up and say what they feel, and if you get no support for it, then you ought to start doing, we could help you do a phased budget to spend your million bucks and, and fix it. But you're gonna spend a million dollars on a school that isn't getting bigger. So I just want you to be careful about that, because that's not gonna be the end of it.
So it just gets us to where we are today?
Well, it, you know, it patches all the holes in the bone. Well, it, you know, it patches all the holes in the bone, but it's, it's always going to be what it is. I think you have a chance to metamorphos, metamorphose this into a really terrific school facility. Um, yes?
To metamorphos this facility into something really extravagant, I really prefer B2. Do you too? So should...
I love B2.
Okay.
The question would be too, would be, just Steve, on curiosity, whether or not we could get enough space if we took two properties over there to get a driveway turnaround to drop off for the elementary?
Um, you know, you probably could do that. What you might do then is come down Summit, you go this way, drop off, and exit this way.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
You could do that. Then you would not want to play here, you'd want to play here.
Correct.
Now, this, this lot is virtually empty now.
Yeah.
So, uh, I mean, that would be even a nicer playground. I like this scheme too, I really do. It seems cleaner and simpler.
But the elevation, I mean, we're down from, from Summit Street, I mean, the elevation-wise...
We would be going up, yes.
Yeah, you, what we'd probably do is put a very slight ramp in here and go up. But that's okay. The other thing we could do is, we don't, because our exit is here, there is no exit at the end of the hall, the exit's to the side, we could actually have the building down in a bit if we needed to. We just bring our foundation up.
Okay.
We'd make that work. This is, this is really nice. The only thing I would, can be concerned about is, could we keep all of our construction here, and would you be comfortable leaving the middle school as it is? Just leaving. Would we take the sixth grade from here, make this a six, seven, eight in the lower level, and make sure that we made those two funky classrooms under this room really nice? And would we even consider maybe seeing how inexpensive that we could add a room out there at grade, just on the lower floor?
Now, that would be, yeah.
If you did that, see, that's, that's why these meetings are interesting.
That would make sense.
Because you, you come up to a scheme D, yes.
Would there be two main offices, one for the elementary and one for the high school?
In this scheme, there wouldn't be.
There'd just be one?
One office, right there.
One principal?
I don't know that.
Or two?
I don't know.
That'd be up to it.
In theory, one principal can handle, actually, in bigger schools, one principal handles just up to 600, which I think is tough.
Is that with an assistant principal?
You do it with an assistant or an assistant...
Not an assistant too, but an assistant?
You do an assistant who might have teaching duties. So this is, I think this is sort of cleaner, you know, this looks like it's succinct, it's cleaner. This is interesting because this doesn't change the site much at all. It leaves this intact. We own this. And, and the question is, if we did this, could we make something like this work so that, the question then would be, do we not want the elementary kids entering here? I think this is not terribly difficult to enter, but I could be corrected. If you entered right here, right there, and went this way, I mean, you're not, you're not getting in too much trouble there. Now, what time do you start school?
10:00.
What time does the junior or senior come in?
10:00.
Just 10:00. And what would happen if you said you have to come in at 20:00?
10:00.
Just change your bus...
I thought you were talking about the students.
Yeah, students.
Students or teachers?
Students or 10:00?
10:00. Yours are...
10:00.
Yeah, but you've got to look, the new studies, now they start school at 8:30 or 9 o'clock, so they...
That's right. So the question then would be, could we put a bigger gap of arrival time?
Then we'd cost more money for busing.
Might, might. So that would mean, how would we feel about everybody arriving within 10 minutes here? So therefore, should we do not only this corridor, but this corridor, so the elementary school kids come in here, and there's a teacher on duty at entry time anyway, then the question would be, are you then going to have more than one administrative core? I like this proximity, because if, if a student has a problem and needs to go to the nurse, or the principal, or the guidance, right there. So we look at that. That's the kind of stuff, this is just, this is basically a squared-off bubble diagram. This is a very, very beginning. Yes?
If you're worried about the kids coming in together, we've already talked about having an entrance from Summit Street, so have an entrance for the elementary off Summit, and then an entrance for the high school in the main parking lot where it is now.
Right, that's for this scheme, right?
No, the scheme we did, both of them could work that way.
So have the, have the elementary enter here?
Yeah.
Be good.
Or on the side, or whatever.
Okay, so, um, I guess we could bring a bus, we'd have to get the bus this way to drop off.
No.
But where you said the playground.
Yeah, that way.
Good.
And let, let them come in here. So that would mean that all, all you'd have to do is keep your buses flowing. Now, if you did that, you could start to say that all buses come this way, and this becomes much more parking.
Yeah, correct.
Those are the answer. So buses don't come here, makes this much narrower, you could get probably another 25 spaces right there.
Yeah, be good.
Yeah, but kids are already riding, everybody's riding on the bus.
They're riding together, right.
So just have one person outside, and everybody gets off the bus.
And get off, and you say, "Kids go that way, kids go that way." And you don't even have to tell them after a while, but those are the details we'd want to work out in, in study meetings, yes?
Well, I mean, can we add, when the high schoolers get off here, they come into the gym, and they're in the gym. So the elementary kids can walk right into the main entrance and take the right and go up into the cafeteria there.
Why, why do the high school kids go in here?
That's where the morning duty is.
That's where they go before the bell rings.
That's where everybody goes?
The high school, junior high goes down to their rooms.
And what do the high schoolers do in the gym? Stand around?
Oh, stand around.
Eat breakfast or...
Eat breakfast? So now, here's what I want to tell you. If the high school kids are going to eat breakfast, they're probably going to be here, and so are the elementary school kids. So we have to think that through and figure out how that's going to go. Is, is breakfast, hot breakfast?
At the elementary, yeah.
What about, what is it, à la carte for the high school?
Pretty much, I think.
All right, so you could still do that. I mean, à la carte can be off a cart.
Because they, they, sometimes they have French toast and...
I think those could be worked out. I think the real question's become, um, you know, this is a half a million dollars less than this. That's big money. Okay.
Can you repeat that again, I need to read it.
This scheme is half a million dollars less than this scheme. This is 7.75, this is 7.25.
I could spend the other half a million.
Sure.
There's a little play money there.
Yeah.
Now, um, uh, you know, I've got to tell you something, I think it would be, I think I don't have my numbers for fine enough, because if I do this, I'm not doing this, and that's money.
Yeah.
So I think, I think this might even be a little more, or this could be a little less, but if we do this, that's pretty easy to do.
Well, I think the difference, Steve, that you got is, this has one cost, but buying those properties probably makes off four.
So that's what we want to figure out.
You're going to have to buy a property on C2, right?
No, we have to buy one property.
Yes.
The Millers.
So one way or the other.
Buy one.
You sort of have to on this site, it'd be real tough if you didn't buy any property.
Yeah, what I'm saying is, either one, it's buying property.
Okay, well, that's what I've been doing for three months, is putting this together. I'm sure there are things that I didn't get right, and I would really appreciate it if you could take some notes, and if you have any quick notes, and maybe either get them to the principal or to Bill, and then I'll wait and see if Bill invites me back, and if he does, I'll come back.
Thank you, I think you've done a great job.
Thank you very much. It's nice to talk to you all.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I think it's wonderful, Steve, thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you for coming.
If you don't need your book, I'll take it, and I'm going to actually make some more in the...
You might have taken some of Craig's other novels, I think he might want to look at.
Well, that's great. You want to make some more?
There, one of those circles...
Yeah, Steve's going to send up a bunch more, he's why you would select them.
Are they there already, or is it planned?